That just means that this point of interest isn't going to happen.
Good evening, everybody here, and those of you who are watching at home, welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of February 11th, 2019. This evening, we have the invocation given by Pastor Brad Harris from the Associate Bible Baptist Church, and then we will have the pledge led by Terry Hollander. Everybody please stand.
Let's pray, may we. Dear Lord, we are so thankful that you are our God and that we are acknowledging you at this moment. We would just be grateful for all those who serve. We think of our military, we think of those in uniform amongst our community who protect and serve us. I pray that we're just always grateful for those who are willing to serve and do the work for us. And Lord, we pray for this meeting, pray for those up here representing different parts of our community. Lord, I just pray you be with them and their families. I thank you for their service to our community. I thank you for the concerned citizens here tonight, and I pray that your blessing be upon this meeting and that we just rejoice and think of everything that we have because of your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel. Councilmember Mike Ealem.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Next on our agenda is traffic regulations for Forestale Road. And it's opened up for public hearing, and the public hearing is only for Forestale Road. So anybody speaking on that subject, just speak on that particular subject. No other traffic regulation will be heard tonight. First card?
Nancy Abinstari. Well, when the printer fails you, you have to wing it here with an iPad, so I apologize for reading from that.
Hey, you're saving paper. Look at you.
Yes, sir. But the first three that didn't print right, those went to trash, so I don't want to say. All right. Forestale Road and the surrounding area with its lower speed limits was a major contributing factor to our decision to purchase out here. Our home is fairly close to the road, and this concerned us, but we were reassured by the 35 mile-per-hour speed limit. Unfortunately, we quickly learned through observation that our new home is on a road where the 35 mile-per-hour speed limit is virtually ignored. It is the norm to observe drivers traveling in excess of 50 miles per hour on Forestale Road. Traveling at the speed limit, I am frequently passed by drivers going 45 to 50 and higher, crossing a double-yellow line as they do so. This does not indicate that the speed limit to me is too low. It indicates to me that drivers will be passing me at 55 to 60 if the speed limit is raised to 45. As I spoke with my neighbors about my concerns with the proposed change in the speed limit, I found one area resident in favor of an increased speed limit, one. His reasoning, he told me he's tired of getting speeding tickets. That seems absurd to me, to want a higher speed limit so that one is less likely to break the law and thereby avoid fines. A casual drive down our road will not tell you the story. You're not living here on our road to see the daily speeding and other careless driving that takes place. It's common to see tire tracks in front yards and other damage to property along Forestale Road due to careless and imprudent driving. I see, as a retired person, there during the day and there on weekends. I'm there most of the driving day, you might say. I see semis, pup trailers, gravel and dump trucks, trucks and trailers loaded with hay. They can all be found on Forestale Road daily. We have school buses loading and unloading children, farm machinery, bicyclists, pedestrians, wildlife, mail carriers working their routes, farm animals, park visitors, and horse trailers entering and leaving driveways on Forestale Road. To live here with the current level of risk is enough. Please don't ignore the concerns of your constituents. Please consider the voices of the people living here and make the appropriate decision to keep our speed limit on Forestale Road at 35. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Les Jones.
Good evening, Commissioners. I live on, I'm Leslie Jones, live at 898 Forestale Road. And... Is this on where I can?
It takes a moment for it to pop up.
Increase the brightness maybe. Well, it's kind of hard to see this, but this is Forestale Road running lengthwise this way. It intersects with Holt Road. I live just down this way, about an eighth of a mile, just to the west at this point. What's particular about this, you don't notice this, but there's a hill right here at the top, and I show it in another picture here just later on, that this curves right here. And you see this car up here, he's already crossed the center line. This truck going the other direction is also across the center line. One of the reasons being that this road is pretty narrow, and it drops off really fast. So you want to hug the center line, otherwise you're off in the ditch and have to get someone to pull you out, as is evident down in front of my place. Now, this gravel here in the ditch this last summer, this is just down from Holt Road. There's the curve. There was a water truck come along headed east, and a sand truck come around this corner over the top of the curve, cross the center line again, and run the water truck off into my ditch. There's 150-foot of ditch that was torn up. I put gravel in it. Since this picture was taken, this is off of Google Earth, since this picture was taken, I've then had to cover it back over with dirt. This is further on down Forestale, as you come up on to Morrison Lane. And you see, again, there's another car already crossed the center line. No doubt these vehicles are traveling in excess of 35, otherwise there's plenty of room on Forestale Road, if you're driving the speed limit, to stay in your own lane. Okay, thank you. What brought me to this picture is that we often travel Morrison Lane to intersect with Forestale when we're coming in from Winsfield. This corner right here is kind of a blind corner. Again, with Google Earth, you don't see that this is a bit of a hill here, and you can't see down Forestale Road. So you pull up to this corner, and you look twice, you look three times before you go around there because people are flying down this road, supposedly only 35 miles per hour. This is, again, Forestale. This is over in front of the New Melli Lakes Park. This is the only place on Forestale where it's wide enough, only because they've had to replace this bridge prior to us moving out there. It's actually wide enough, they can actually put lines on the either sides of the road then, where, as you see above and below this, there is no room to put those lines. This park lies right next to a development here. All of these families, to gain access to this park, they can't walk across. They've got to drive all the way through to get back into this. This is kind of a little higher view still, also on Google Earth, showing all of the driveways along Forestale Road. The blue dot, of course, is me out there. It's just at the top of this hill where the road curves off of Holt Road. Here is down by Quail Ridge Park. This is another county road, 35 miles per hour also. You see, it's much wider. It's at least 20 feet wider, still 35 miles per hour. It also goes through a park. It's wide enough, you can actually put lines on either side of the road to mark the edge of the road. Plus, there's plenty of greater ditch. It doesn't fall off. This is just a little bit higher, showing, again, this addition over here to gain access to the New Melli Park. That's what I have tonight. I am a resident out there. Traffic does go by there extremely fast. To increase this speed limit to 45 miles per hour just gives these people license to drive faster yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Elaine Sweeten. Hello, my name is Elaine Sweeten. Thank you, Councilman, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I have lived on Forestale Road for 35 years, and in that time, traffic has quadrupled, if not more. There are new subdivisions, there are far more traffic. Semi trucks and quarry trucks are more frequent because of the shortcut they take from Z to T, and of course, more construction going on in the area. Yes, the speed limit is 35, and I would say they travel it much faster. But it makes it dangerous because, number one, there's more traffic, and it will continue to rise. Two, traveling too fast for the hazardous areas on the roads because there are no... You know, it's just a drop-off. Number three, there are no shoulders. My house is located between Holt Road and Borgelt Road. This area has 16 driveways. A lot of the residences have horses, and therefore, they use their horse trailers. On my end of the section, there's a slight curve, and there's trees that blocks your vision. When people are speeding through there, it's dangerous because there's no shoulder, and it's a two-foot drop-off. And so I've seen three cars flip over in my yard and in my neighbor's yard. And there's no shoulder. My mailbox has been replaced 20 times in 35 years, and many times, people end up in my yard, leaving me with a big mess. Yes, it might take an effort to drive the 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, but it's safer. Besides, we all know most people drive faster because they get away with it. Raising the speed limit will only give them permission to go another five to nine miles faster. If that's the case, are you sending out police to enforce that 45 mile-an-hour speed? Please, just let it as it is, for the safety of everyone. Sometimes, people don't realize what can happen on these roads. The residents of Forestale Road, we've seen things and know how dangerous it is. In the near future, there will be more subdivisions. There are far more traffic. It's harder to return to a slower speed limit once it has been raised. This road will only become more dangerous with more speeding traffic. Let me leave you with a few things to ponder. Do you have the money to bring police to enforce your new speed limit? Do you have the money to put safe shoulders on these roads? Do you really want to endanger lives? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Diane Sedra.
Hello, I was here January 7th and shared a few pictures that I had taken at that time of some of the intersections and roads that intersected with Forestale Road that had limited lines of sight. I touched briefly about the farm traffic, and I just had a couple of pictures to share this evening. It's a little hard to see the picture. This is my husband, a couple of years ago, on a beautiful spring day, driving east on Forestale Road. And I don't know if you can see, but right here is a Chevron sign. There's a culvert right there, and on this side, there's a mailbox right here, and a hill ahead of him, and this truck that pulled over in a driveway so that they could meet. So that's one of the hazards of increased speed on Forestale Road. This is the same view, same day, but that one was on Morrison Lane. And then this picture, these pictures I took, January 10th, 2019, three days after I was here and talked about that, there was an area farmer who still had his crops in the field, and he was getting them out when the ground was frozen. And that was my view going east on Forestale Road, just west of Oberhamann. And this is where he pulled off to let me go by, and you can see that his right dual is off in the ditch, past, beyond the pavement, so that we have room to meet. So we're against the increased speed limit for the same reason that everybody else said, is that if you raise the speed limit to 45, people will think that's permission to go 50 to 55. And with the farm traffic and bikers and walkers, we just feel that's too fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Woodring.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I've lived on, in that area and traveled these roads. I live on Morrison Lane, moved out there in 1957. Roads were gravel. They have changed a lot. Traffic's changed a lot. We have dump trucks, we have school buses, we have trash trucks, we have mail ladies that travel up and down these roads. Morrison Lane and Oberhamann are 21 feet wide with absolutely no shoulders. Forestale Road is one foot wider. You come across these hills and these curves at 35 miles an hour, it takes you 100, with one second, one second of recognition, it takes you 105 feet to stop. The faster you go, the longer the distance. 45, it is at 145 feet. That is almost a half of a football field. Then if you're traveling at 55, which 90%, I'm not going to say 90%, but I'm going to say 45 to 50% of the people do when they cut through these roads, that it's going to take you 215 feet. That's three-quarters of a football field. The safety out there, it is not safe for our children, our livestock, or our farm equipment. So we need to ask, what values do we put on personal property, animal life, and human life? Just to go that much faster, and it doesn't take that much longer. Two miles, it takes you four minutes. I've timed it at 35 miles an hour. At 45 miles an hour, it takes you three minutes. So you're not gaining that much, gentlemen. For the value of your life or somebody else's life, it's not worth it. I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
More spray.
Hello, I'm a resident of Forestale Road, and I have a couple of pictures here.
Oh, I think you're quite capable of that.
I'm not so sure.
I'm just going to help you talk.
I turned the wrong way.
Yes, it'll help if you turn it over.
Sorry, which one? This one, this one first. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so. Let me turn it over. Okay. Turn it like this, there. There you go. My hand out of the way. Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, okay. So this is a picture of my driveway, and Forestale Road is the blind curve that you see coming around the corner. That's just right, and the intersection that is coming up, if you can see, is Holt Road. There's not even a stop sign at the end of Holt Road, it's just a yield. So literally, I've had a car come up Holt Road, not slow down, come, jumped the embankment, crashed in through my fence, ended up in my pasture. Fortunately for him, he only damaged his car and not any of my animals, although I spent the next couple of days picking glass up out of my pasture. The second person came around the corner and ended up hitting my fence, and luckily, he only flipped back over upside, upside down in the ditch. So he didn't, he didn't actually have to be hauled away off of my pasture. So, thinking about what I was going to say tonight, I was thinking about a case that I had read in law school. It was about a truck who approached a train, or, I'm sorry, a railroad crossing. And the train was traveling about 30 miles an hour around a blind corner. This guy stopped, he listened, he looked, he didn't hear any bells or whistles. He proceeded across the railroad track, bam, guess what? Killed. Turns out that the railroad company, Wabash Railroad Company, was found liable. Every time I get to the end of my driveway, I wind down my window, I listen, I look both ways. I sometimes honk my horn, and I basically take my life in my hands just trying to turn out onto Forestale Road. That's at 35 miles an hour. So, another thing I wanted to mention is I do teach a class in business ethics and business law. So I said, "Well, hey, guess what? I'm trying to teach you concepts with making analogies alongside." I said, "So, I have this problem." I said, "This county council has a decision to make. They have to decide whether they're going to raise their speed limits from 35 to 45 miles an hour." I said, "Okay, if you look at the ethical issue behind this, what's the first thing you're going to look for?" And they said, "Oh, well, let's list the alternatives, the advantages, the disadvantages." So I said, "Okay, let's do that for them." So, we made out a paper of, we'll start with the advantages. Once again, thank you. I'm not adept. Okay, so basically, I think, based on, or, based on the testimony, or the, I should say, the statements made at one of the other meetings, there were two proponents to raising the speed limit. One of them, his rationale was, "This way, I won't get a ticket. If I'm allowed to go faster, I won't get a ticket." Well, I hate to tell you, but I surfed around on Kase Ned a little bit, and that ship's already sailed, long gone. Secondly, the other, the other point the class brought up, I said, "What else? What other could possibly be any other advantages behind raising the speed limit?" They couldn't come up with any. I said, "So, okay, well, let me tell you a little bit about what I heard at the last meeting." Somebody stepped up and spoke and said, "Well, if you travel from one end of Forestale Road to the other, it's 4.9 miles. If you're traveling at 45 miles an hour instead of 35, you can actually get there in just less than two minutes faster." So, I mean, unless you're talking about billable time, I don't see how less than two minutes is really going to save you all that much. So we kind of nixed that one off. I said, "It's okay, what else?" Nobody could come up with anything. Nobody had any other reasons why it would be advantageous to raise the speed limit. So I said, "Okay, let's look at the disadvantages." First of all, and I have to read from my list here, most drivers, oh, most, oh, sorry. I mean, most drivers still won't obey the law. If it's 35 miles an hour, let's face it, they're going to go 45. I asked the class, I said, "Okay, everybody in here, no repercussions, raise your hand. How many of you have ever gone nine to 10 miles over the speed limit?" Guess what? All 23 kids raised their hand. I said, "Okay, how many of you have actually gotten a ticket going nine to 10 miles over the speed limit?" One kid raised his hand, and I said, "What happened? What was the situation?" He said, "Well, it was a little municipality in St. Louis County," I won't mention the name, "and he said, 'I walked in court that day, the prosecutor looked at it, said, 'You're only going 10 miles over.'" He said, "Get out of here," threw the ticket away. Okay? Second, you can't possibly, okay, I better take this because I can't read. Okay, so secondly, you can't possibly avoid plowing into a car that's pulling out of a driveway or around a short corner onto Forestale Road from a connecting road, particularly if it's around a corner when you're traveling at 45 to 55 miles an hour. If you are able to avoid hitting that oncoming car, you'll most likely swerve in the opposite direction and hit somebody traveling the other way on the road when you're traveling at 45 miles an hour. You'll most likely sustain injuries when you crash, and you'll inflict injury on the person or persons you strike, possibly severe injuries. Number five, you will most likely sustain much more damage to your vehicle and possibly your own body when that deer jumps out in front of you as you're traveling between 45 and 65 miles an hour on Forestale Road than you would at a speed of 35. Because remember, one of the proponents of this also said that there's more and more traffic coming out this way, the area's growing, we need to be aware of the fact that the area's growing. Well, to me, that isn't necessarily something in favor of this proposition. I would look at that as more of a disadvantage because the more houses that go up, the more traffic you're going to have, the more deer you're chasing out of the woods that are going to jump out onto the road in front of you. It's kind of a no-brainer. Number six, you will injure more children when you're traveling at 45 to 60 miles an hour over, over that hill or around that corner, and you strike that stopped-school bus while it's unloading children, or, on my corner, as children are getting off of the bus, crossing over the opposite direction to go to their house. Number seven, you will most likely hit that farmer who is on her tractor, trying to get to her fields to cut her hay that your horses may need to eat next winter. Number eight, you will kill that bicyclist who you didn't see until the last minute when you were traveling at 45 to 60 miles an hour around that corner, and texting or talking to your spouse on the phone, or drinking your coffee, or yelling at the radio. Number nine, numerous studies have shown that there is a direct correlation between increased speed and increased deaths. And finally, number 10, you personally will have to live with severely injuring or killing another human being for the rest of your life just because you had to shave that less than two minutes off your drive. So please, as you're studying the advantages and the disadvantages of raising the speed limit, look at how number, the number 10 versus the number 1 or 2 on our list, and please don't raise the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arnie Deanhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and county resident. First of all, the highway superintendent at the last meeting, two weeks ago, explained to us the process. I really believe in transparency, as you know, and I feel that the county is keeping a number of documents from the public. The highway superintendent testified that the petition process is... process is 15 signatures of homeowners within a certain radius of the proposed speed limit or traffic regulation change. However, in the meeting packet, in the supporting packet of the county council, the county staff did not put those 15 signatures there to make sure that it's even valid in the first place. I think that the public and these other neighbors behind me have a right to know who those signatures were. The second thing is, if you're putting together a petition, as the attorney or the professor eloquently explained, you would think you'd put facts in your petition, and you'd put your proposal forward. Well, again, I don't see where the county council staff has included that in your packet as public officials, and I really have a transparency issue with that. There's about three or four police officers, law enforcement officers in the audience, and they all will tell you that they will not initiate a traffic stop of 10 miles or under, because the judge is just simply going to throw it out of the court. And our county councillor is here, he's in charge of the county municipal court. He will also tell you that the county does not prosecute anybody in this county that does over nine to 10 miles above the speed limit. Just doesn't happen. So, it doesn't initiate a traffic stop. By raising this limit 10 miles per hour, we'll be moving this initiated traffic stop to 55 miles per hour. We have a bunch of increased traffic, as was testified by other people, with our increased population and new development out on Forestale Road. The county has not invested expansion of the road to bring it up to today's standards. The county has not invested safety features to make this roadway safe for our county families.
Mr. Deanhoff?
Yes, sir.
Are you stating whether you're for or you're against? That's what we're trying to determine. We know the process, but can you tell us whether you're for raising the speed limit or not raising it? That's what this hearing is about.
I'm against.
Okay, thank you.
So where is our traffic safety unit in this case? The police department has five or six officers dedicated to traffic safety and, and traffic enforcement. These roads do not have current safety features. The terrain is miserable in this part of the western part of our county. Rural traffic must be this council's first and top priority. I ask that you save lives, and that you save injuries, and that you vote no on increasing this speed limit by 10 miles. Doesn't make any sense. I don't see any of the supporting facts. I don't see any documents that even lead to that area. So I ask that you unanimously vote this 10 mile per increased traffic speed limit down. Thank you.
Yes. That's all the speaker cards.
Seeing that there are no other speakers, I'll close the public hearing on traffic regulations for Forestale Road.
I think we have another speaker.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I live on Oberhamon Road. I own land that borders Forestale Road. And I'm going to borrow her picture. See it work? Yeah, I'm going to borrow her picture. This is the land I own, right? It's a quarter.
Sir?
Yes.
Could you grab that mic real quick?
Sure.
Let's make sure that you're heard. Thank you.
As I said, I live on Oberhamon Road, but I own this land here. It's a quarter mile along Forestale Road. As you can see, this tractor, now borrowing her picture, it just happens so. Oberhamon Road comes into Forestale Road, intersects there. As you notice, you can see just part of that tractor coming over the knoll. Where Forestale Road, where Oberhamon Road goes into Forestale, you cannot see cars going eastbound on Forestale Road. The reason I say that, I go up Oberhamon all the time, intersect Forestale. When a stop, it stops on there, a stop at the intersection, if a car is going faster than 35 miles an hour, he will be on your tail, and I have been honked at many times for somebody going in excess of 35. There's two knolls here, one here and one over here further that will hide the car in the, in those dips, and you can't see them. But at 35 miles an hour, that is plenty of time, there's no problem at the intersection. Above 35 miles an hour, they would be on your tail. And I've been, been honked at and been mad at so many times going out that. I drive equipment out of this knoll right here from this 50-acre field all the time. So that's, that's one prevalent fact about the county roads out there, is that there, and there's a lot, a lot of blind spots. As stated, I do live on Oberhamon, but my kids go along the Forestale Road a lot of times. But also, there's, there's two people that ride their horses along Forestale Road, and I saw them several times. So I gave them permission to go into my field, my hayfield there, or cropland, so that they have a safety margin with cars on the highway. I don't like to do it. I'd rather not they ride horses on that property, but you know, I'm conscientious. There's one other thing I'd like to mention, too. I think you all have done a tremendous job with St. Charles County and the master plan that St. Charles County has, and throughout that whole thing, the most prevalent thing that I see, every section deals with safety. And if you look at this thing, if you increase the speed limit from that 45, to the 45 miles an hour, as has mentioned by several people, excess of 10 miles an hour above that, negates the safety aspect of what you all are trying to do in all parts of your aspect of your safety within the county. So just hand in hand, has been said, what are we dealing with? Are we, we, we going to increase the speed without regard the impatience of some people and the safety of people? Because speed injures, and speed kills. Now, I'm not going to say a whole lot more because the audience has done a tremendous job bringing in facts and so forth. It's really prevalent that we would like the speed remained at 35 miles an hour on all aspects of those roads out there. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. If that's the last speaker, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, anybody can come forward and speak on any topic that they wish. Once a topic has been determined, we allow three minutes for pro and three minutes for con. Are there any speakers?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. First thing I'd like to start out is, I hope and pray that the police officer in the SUV that flipped over in Saturday's ice storm is okay, and I hope that his K-9 partner is also doing fine. I'd like to see the county ask an update from the police chief, because I think the community has a right to know, and we are all praying for this officer and his K-9's full recovery. On your agenda tonight, I'd like to talk about a number of bills. The first bill is Bill Number 4682. And my question is why? It's for Gateway or Greenway Trails. It's $60,000, part of a payment for a master plan. It makes no sense, because this district is supported by millions of dollars of a sales tax that we pay one-sixth of the sales tax each and every day that each one of us St. Charles Countyans goes to the store. So why are we paying for this park function, this park district function? It just makes no sense. As I said, we pay one-sixth of a cent for the Greenway Trails program, and it's trails throughout our county, and we pay one-sixth for state green space and conservation efforts. I ask that you vote no, because this makes no sense that they're asking for even more money from us as a county. The next issue that I would like to talk about is Bill Number 4683, University of Missouri Extension Service. Mr. White, you serve on that council, and I ask that you fight for these people who have asked Mr. Bob Shinar, the Director of Finance, for three years, $117,000 appropriation, but yet this county council only wants to afford them $100,000. They have actual expenses of three personnel administrative assistants that detune of $145,000 with salary benefits and pension. The other eight employees are paid for by the University of Missouri through state legislature appropriations. So I ask that you increase what they ask for, because they're dipping in the reserves, and they're having a problem meeting and paying their bills. They send Ms. Joanne Lycom and Bob Shinar, the financials, each and every month and all their bills. I think it's time that we pay our fair share. Cruelty and crushing of Gary Griffin, who's been a longtime member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a commissioner, is just extraordinary, especially from Steve Elman and Joe Brazel. It's shameful that you would shun this outstanding public servant who works for $100 a month planning our county. In an email sent by an $85,000 Chief of Staff, Vicky Hustleman, to Mr. Griffin from Mr. Elman, stated that he wouldn't be reaffirmed as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. That was sent this past Friday at 4:59 PM. No chance for response. This is wrong of the county executive? They want to appoint Diane Sale, an owner and developer of a Consulting Unlimited, a close friend to Joe and Kelly Brazel. I really feel that this is wrong, and I ask that you vote down this, this appointment, and then I ask that you give Gary Griffin a term. He doesn't deserve to be caught up in politics over a water issue in Public Water District Number 2. So I ask that you put, vote down the appointment of Diane Sale. Thank you.
Next.
That's all.
That's all? Well, very good. Hearing that, then we'll move on to the oral report from County Executive Elman. Do you have a report?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any, any comments or items for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It has been approved. Moving from that, we move on to bills for, for final passage. Bill Number 4680.
Bill Number 4680, requested by Joe Brazel and Dave Hammond, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and ordinance amending Sections 405.200(c) and 405.210(a) of the Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, the Unified Development Ordinance relating to slopes and common ground.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion's been approved, and 4680 has been tabled. Moving on to 4681.
Bill Number 4681, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a First Amendment to lease agreement between St. Charles County and St. Charles Community College for College Meadows Park.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Seeing none? Read the bill.
Okay. Joe Cronin. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill 4661 has passed. We'll move on to 4682.
Bill Number 4682. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation and reimbursement agreement with the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, DBA the Great Rivers Greenway District, and municipal partners for the development of a master plan for a series of parks, trails, and greenways in St. Charles County, Missouri, at a cost to the county of $60,000.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Seeing none, then call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental cooperation and reimbursement agreement with the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, DBA the Great Rivers Greenway District, and municipal partners for the development of a master plan for a series of parks, trails, and greenways in St. Charles County, Missouri, at a cost to the county of $60,000.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4682 has passed, and we move on to 4683.
Bill Number 4683, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, read the bill and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
4683 has passed, and we're moving on to bills for introduction with Bill 4684.
Bill Number 4684, requested by Dave Hammond, Joe Brazel, and Joe Cronin, an ordinance enabling St. Charles County, Missouri, to join Show Me Pace pursuant to state statute and stating the terms under which the county will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Questions or comments, gentlemen? I believe there's somebody here in the audience that could speak on the topic.
That's fine, I have a comment, too, somewhere along the line.
Okay.
Since my name's on this and I'm the only person here, I would just tell you that I did ask county staff who drafted this agreement to make sure the consumer safeguards were at least as good as the previous clean energy provider that we, finance provider we did, and she assured me that not only were the safeguards as good as the previous one, they actually had some enhanced safeguards. So I feel like the consumer protections are there to take care of the citizens of our county, and this gives folks another way, another competitive source of financing for home improvements that are designed to save them energy. So, gentlemen, I don't know you, I've never met you before, but you know, please come up and speak and tell us more. Okay?
Thank you. My name's Byron Delir, and want to appreciate the Chairman White for visiting this issue for St. Charles County. And before my remarks, I'd like to introduce Josh Campbell, who is the program administrator for the Show Me Pace Clean for the Show Me Pace Clean Energy District, and he'd like to talk a little bit about the district, and then I'm going to mention some of the benefits to St. Charles County property owners and the success of Missouri Pace that's happened recently. We'll try to make this as short as possible, so.
Thank you. So, my name's Josh Campbell, I'm the Executive Director of the Missouri Energy Initiative. It's a 501(c)(3) organization. Part of the work that we do is to increase energy-related economic development in Missouri, and to that end, we started Show Me Pace three years ago. Up until, I think, just this year, we will be, have just done commercial projects, 20, over 20 million across the state, agriculture, healthcare, hospitality, business, it doesn't matter, we've been able to do them all. The addition of Y-Green as a partner to Show Me Pace allows us to reach into the residential and small commercial communities, and obviously, we do this at no cost to the community. We're using private funds, this is a pure private-public partnership, with the district being a public entity, working with the county as a public entity, utilizing funding partners, both Y-Green and, we have nine funding partners right now that will then compete to bid on a project for property owners. What all this means is, St. Charles County residents will see lower costs. Competition among districts makes us do a better job. Competition amongst our lenders makes them lower their fees and their costs, and competition among contractors will hopefully increase their likelihood of doing jobs and providing better work again for St. Charles residents. And that's why we bring this today, we think it, with little cost, or pardon me, no cost to St. Charles and no liability for the county, it's on our political subdivision. It's a great example of good public-private partnerships.
Yeah, and as Councilman Cronin mentioned, currently, Show Me Pace is enabled in the city of St. Charles, St. Peters, Wentzville, and Cottleville. So, having the county in toto adopt the resolution will provide a uniform pace marketplace for all St. Charles County property owners. And to give you a sense of what Pace has done in Missouri, the Pace program in Missouri is the best in the entire Midwest region. It features financing for residential and commercial properties. There's been about 2,000 property owners that have taken advantage of this financing, and it really operates as a means to provide 100% of the costs to do energy upgrades. And just to kind of give you a scenario of how that works in the marketplace, say, for example, a property owner has their HVAC system go out in the middle of the summer, and they don't have a lot of cash in the bank, so they may be, you know, they may be putting the cost of an HVAC system, a replacement air conditioning system, on their credit card if they don't have readily available financing. With the Pace program available, that property owner can access easy-to-use, affordable financing that's much lower, it won't be like an 18% interest rate that a credit card would have, but the interest rate could be like 6% or 7%, and plus, they would put in a system that actually pays for itself through savings. Because the only measures that this program is allowed to finance are energy improvements that actually pay for themselves through savings. That's a statutory requirement, and there's been a lot of legal substantiation and methodology arrived at to ensure that the only measures that we finance actually pay for themselves. So, there's a number of St. Charles contracting companies that are already involved in the program, Swiss Air, RNA Contracting, AAA Home Services, ByState Windows and Doors, Crest Solar, Signature Roofing, and that really amplifies the other aspect of this program that makes it good public policy, is the fact that Pace programs actually create good-paying jobs. You're talking about carpenters, electricians, solar installers, there's been over 1,200 good-paying jobs created in the state of Missouri by the program, and we are very much looking forward to being in St. Charles County and expect great success in economic development and savings for the community. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to 4685.
Bill Number 4685, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for the purpose of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Peters and the Darden Creek Drainage District, Number Three, for maintenance of Darden Creek.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Seeing none, that ends all the bills for introduction, and we move on to announcements and miscellaneous.
I have one of those. Wanted to point out that coming up on Saturday, March 9, from 11:00 to 2:00, at the lower level at Mid Rivers Mall in Center Court, we are doing a county government expo. So, they're going to have representatives from over 15 different departments that are going to be there, so you could adopt a pet, you can find out about jobs, there's health screenings, you can register to vote. The police department's going to be there, and they won't be handing out tickets if you're going nine miles an hour over, I'm told. I learned that tonight, but I'm not going to hold the chief to that one. So, that's a new one that I just learned tonight. But we invite everybody to come out and get to know what your county government does, get to meet some of the county government representatives. They are going to be there on Saturday, on March 9, in the Center Court in the lower level of Mid River Mall. So, we'd love for everybody to come out. If you want some more information, it's on the county website at SCCMO.org, and you'll see it right there on the main page.
Very good, councilman. Anybody else?
I do.
Mr. Cronin?
I'd like to thank County Highway, they had a tough storm to fight in District One because the ice came in the middle of the night, but by morning, they did a pretty good job, and the roads were pretty clear, considering everything. And then, in due respect to the, my, the nun that taught me English in grade school, they spelled announcements wrong up there. So, Sister Claire, while you're up there watching, I call it. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? A motion adjourned?
Motion.
Second.
So moved. Thank you all for coming.